Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Hammond?
Here.
Vice President Daley?
Here.
Trustee Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. I just want to remind everyone that our next Board of Ed scheduled meeting is June 18th, 7:00 PM here in the Bandroom. Please join us as we recognize those staff members that are retiring as well as all our newly tenured staff. So, should be an exciting meeting. Dr. Banante?
Thank you, Mrs. Hammond, and welcome to members of the community who are with us this evening and to our Board of Education members. I just have a few comments and then I'll have some comments later on for agenda items as they come up through the meeting. The first is a congratulations to our community and to our Board of Education on the budget passing by an overwhelming majority as well as the referendum. I want to congratulate our staff and congratulate the Board with that. I know at the end of the last meeting, we were waiting around for some bit of time and I failed to congratulate us and acknowledge that, so I think a lot of hard work and effort went into the budget development process and I'm really happy with where we are and looking forward to the work that we can get started for next school year. Some of the positions that were post or are being created as a result of the budget are will be posted by the end of the day tomorrow. I finalized some documents today. We look forward to having some new staff onboard and as well as other staff that will be coming in just as a result of our regular hiring process. Look forward to that. With it being the end of the school year, there's a lot of activities that are going on. It seems that every evening is another event of some sort, but it's a very celebratory time of the year. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Sniffin as well as Ms. Shields for the Academic Awards Night. I think it was last week. The days are starting to blur, but it was a great event. Having been my first time, I really appreciated the evening and all that went into facilitating the evening and the recognition for our students. It was fantastic. Also had the opportunity to attend the picture component of prom down at the gazebo. Actually Deputy Shelters and I had our picture taken together. Andrew, I got a picture with you too. I'm waiting for a copy of that from Mom. But what a really beautiful setting. I know it was a slight change from where we typically have our photos for prom, but I want to thank again Mrs. Sniffin for coordinating. It was a beautiful spot and location. So I know Basque Bell is great, but the gazebo down on the waterfront is outstanding as well. And thank you and your staff for everything you do to facilitate a safe prom weekend for our students and for their families. And lastly, and again I'll have some comments later on, I received this yesterday which is a recognition from the New York State School Boards Association from Ms. Jennifer Daley. Surprise, surprise. And Jen has reached her, this is a Board Mastery Award for Level 3 status with the New York State School Boards Association. There are only four levels in case anybody was wondering, so Jen's at Level 3. They are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA training activities such as the Board Officers Academy, state mandated trainings, legal conferences, or custom board retreats. And I wanted to present this to Jennifer Daley for her recent recognition. Congratulations Jen. I'll pass that to you.
Surprise.
That also comes with a certificate for one in-person training and also a pad folio here Jen.
Oh my gosh. This is all very exciting. For the next training.
For the next meeting you attend. Congratulations Jen. We know what often goes under-recognized if not unrecognized by the community at large is not understanding how much time and energy is put forth into service at the Board both here in meetings we have locally, but also in trainings that are coordinated through NISBA. So we appreciate your participation.
Thanks.
For now, that concludes my remarks.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Banante. I as well want to echo the great work that Ms. Sniffin and her staff members heard. The prom was fantastic. All the students enjoyed themselves, so thank you. And as well as the academic award ceremony, that was a great night. Thank you. And Jen, I can't say enough of all the hard work that you put forth for this Board, so it truly is appreciated. And thank you for attending those meetings and always advocating not just for our school Board, but school Boards across the state. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee minutes. These are here for our viewing from the Wellness Committee that took place on April 29th. We kind of have a brief agenda this evening, so we're up to communication from the public already? Is there any communication at the moment? Sure, go ahead. Just come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please Maggie. It's for the members of the audience at home.
So I had sent a letter that was a little bit whiny, but I just wanted to see if there had been an update, if anyone had read it or if there was an update on the status of the elementary yearbook advisor position.
There's no update, Ms. Valentine. As I indicated to you, I'll be back in touch with you after I have a chance to look through some matters pertaining to the appointments. You will note that there are where there is an agenda item on this evening for appointments for what we call Schedule B assignments, which are clubs and activities for next school year, but that particular assignment is not included in that.
So and is that updated, the one that's been online that we can see, the one that's up there right now, is that the most recent version?
It should be.
Okay. I guess that's all I have. Cool.
So Maggie, just so you know, we didn't respond because this is a, it's a staffing issue and really those issues are directed through the administrative staff. Had it been a policy matter, you would have heard from me, but Dr. Banante and I had discussed and he said he would be responding and he did, so he's looking into a few things before he gives you a definitive answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional comments? Nope. Okay, moving on to information reports. Those are there for our viewing, which we will see at next meeting for approvals. Consent Agenda Minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Financial. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Just a couple of comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. No, you were right.
Just there were a few points of information that I want to make sure the Board had regarding this or these items. The first, with respect to the instructional contract between our school district and Garrison. We have 13 graduating former Garrison students. They're Haldane students now. And we have 13 students entering next school year as of now from Garrison, just as a point in FYI. With respect to item 14, St. Basil's, St. Basil Academy and our contract with them, we currently have six students from St. Basil that are attending our high school and we anticipate that we will have either four or five students next year attending from St. Basil Academy.
Is one graduating or are we losing one along the way? You mean four or five total we'll have next year?
Graduating.
Graduating.
Correct. One is graduating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And lastly, we have a consortium agreement with Putnam Valley and Garrison for special education, potential special education related programming. We're not currently, there are currently zero students who are involved in programs at either of those schools. That's not to say that we wouldn't potentially have a need we have in the past, so we keep this consortium active through discussions with the administration between those schools. There may be a time to create a class that our students and students from Garrison and Putnam Valley respectively would benefit from attending, so we're looking to keep that consortium open through next school year to continue to have that option.
Okay.
Those are all my remarks.
I have one question.
Thank you.
Sure.
The contract with the Rec Department, do we have all the paperwork in place? You know they have to renew all that stuff and put it in every year and all those things?
Yes, we do.
Alright, so can we just get expiration dates and all those things that we have so we know when it, so I can stop asking the question? Because I ask every year. Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, my question was on nine and 10, actually two questions, one on nine and one on 10. So for the resolution for establish the TRS Reserve Subfund, so I'm going to ask you a question you probably don't know the answer to, but I'll ask anyways. I apologize for that.
Challenge.
So it said the cap of the total amount of the reserve, you can contribute 2% of the salaries every year and the cap on the total reserve is about 10%. So my question is roughly what is the total salary base of the teachers' pool that 10% would be applied to?
That would be the seven, I think it's $7,500,000.
Okay, so roughly, roughly, total amount in that reserve, once it gets filled, which would happen at earliest over five years because 2% a year, would be about $750,000.
Correct.
Thank you. And the second question was on number 10, which is approval to fund district reserve accounts. So that's, if we get to the end of the year and we end up with a carry, a potential carryover of more than 4%, which we can't do, 4% is the maximum, we approve the opportunity to transfer that excess balance to another reserve account. The question is, at this point, do you have any projection for what the net incremental over that 4% might be by the end of the year?
You mean above the 4%?
Yes, yeah.
I anticipate that it could be between $200,000 and $300,000. And I think that we'd already had a bit of a discussion about where that might go first. This obviously would be a good candidate to put the funds into the TRS subfund, right? Because we're establishing that. We do that, that resolution now because it has to be done before the end of the year, but we don't know the amounts because I don't have the audit figures until right before the tax warrant.
Yes. I think I caught the second half of this in the beginning of my term last year, which was like, oh, but I didn't see this piece. So, okay, cool.
That's exactly what happened.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So it's a two-part process. Process, so.
Great.
This is the establishment and then you'll be voting on, I think like end of August or beginning of September?
The August meeting, right before the tax warrant is approved, you'd fund the reserves because anything that's over 4% that's not put into a reserve has to reduce the tax levy.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Financial. May I have a motion?
Motion, personnel.
I think we're personnel.
Sorry, personnel.
Motion, second.
Any questions or comments?
If I may. I just wanted to draw the community's attention to a couple of items that are on this evening's Consent Agenda Personnel. The first is the appointment of a new elementary school principal, Ms. Christine Jammon, who is with us in the audience today. And just a few comments related to that. The first, this was really a rigorous search process that began some time ago and which ultimately included interviews with parents, with teachers, with administrators, with members of our Board of Education, with me. So I think five different interviews for the successful candidate. And really what we, I was able to observe through all of those interview processes or processes is that Ms. Jammon is a student-centered leader, someone who really understands the importance of school culture, school climate, and school community, and who understood the unique needs and the hopes and dreams of a small school community, perhaps because she's also a product of it. As folks will come to know, Ms. Jammon has good history here and she was Haldan, not only is she a great school leader, but she also at one point was Haldane's valedictorian many years ago. And I had the opportunity to meet several staff members and students at Ms. Jammon's current school, Netherwood Elementary School, yesterday, all of whom corroborated our impressions of Christine through this search process. So I just wanted to acknowledge Christine, and I know the appointment is not yet formalized because the Board hasn't acted upon it, but once it is, perhaps we can extend our appreciation and acknowledgement to her. Second, there are two tenure recommendations on tonight's agenda. The first is for Ms. Julia Sniffin, the principal of Haldane High School, as you all know. And I would just say that Julia is the heart and soul of Haldane. And I've probably spent, Julia has the distinct honor of having spent the most hours in the car with me this school year, or I've had the distinct honor of having spent most hours in the car with her through this school year. And again, that term student-centered, I don't, I don't use, you know, I'm deliberate in using it, I don't just throw that out there, but it's important to me that our school leaders are folks who lead with what's best for children in mind and at the fore. And I mentioned that about Christine, but certainly Julia is someone who comes to mind when, when that comes to her leadership. And I know Julia really cares about our students. I've seen that numerous times over the course of our school year and I'm really proud for the prospect of having her as part of Haldane for many years to come. And second, as I alluded to, Mr. Chris Salam, his recommendation for approval of tenure in the area of Director of Athletics, PE, Health, and High School Dean of Students is also on tonight's agenda. Chris has the most formal hats in his title here, no pun intended. And I think we've all come to enjoy Chris's sense of humor and his very easygoing nature, but really at his core, he cares deeply about our students' experiences here on campus. I remember my first entry, Chris was part of the number of entry interviews that I facilitated at the start of the school year, and I remember Chris speaking to his appreciation for the unique dynamic in our community of having, being able to see students participate on the athletic field and then see them the very next day onstage as part of one of our productions and how, how amazing that is, you know, to have that and to see our students, you know, experience our extracurricular program in that way here at Haldane and having come to experience that now myself and being able to see that after spending some time here now. I think Chris hit the nail on the head. That really is something that's very unique about our community and something he's come to appreciate, something I've come to appreciate as well. And again, I look forward to our continued work together after the Board's action on these two items. Just a few comments from me before your action.
Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to all. Welcome back Christine.
Yes, welcome back Christine.
And I just wanted to give a brief comments about Ms. Sniffin and Mr. Salam. Deeply grateful for all the hard work and dedication you've put into this district and continue to every day. Ms. Sniffin, I've seen you through elementary, middle school, high school, and I'm proud to say you have done great work in all those areas. Mr. Salam, I think the first day I introduced Mr. Dr. Banante to you, I was like, he's the class clown. Thanks for bringing humor to the light of all the hard work. Okay, moving on to new business, Ms. Fomilaro, we're up to...
The first item is the CESC/CPSC recommendations. The recommended action states, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is a policy review. This is the first reading for the meal charge and prohibition against meal shaming. This is a policy that is required. Dr. Banante, if you'd like to...
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Dineo.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and 2018-19 Governor's Executive Proposal. This was one of the requirements that schools have to develop a written plan to ensure that all students are treated the same, whether or not they owe money on their school lunch account and whether or not it's negative or positive. We did submit our plan to SED and after a lengthy review, was determined that our plan met all of the qualifications and this is the result of it. And after approved by the Board, it will be posted on our website, but we have been following, this is what we follow during our, our day here.
The only thing I'll add to that, given that Peggy and Jen and I have done some work on the policy manual, this would be a policy that would be included in our updated policy manual, once we're ready for that step in the coming month or so.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So will we have a second read at next meeting?
Correct.
Is that what we're planning? So if anybody has questions in the meantime, we can direct them to Ms. Dineo. Okay, moving on to the approval of the bond resolution. Am I reading this or are you reading this?
So the next two items are bond resolutions and these are the steps that we have to take to move along the bond resolutions that were approved in, as propositions two and three at the May 21st Annual District Meeting. The first one is the school bus and equipment. The recommended action is be it resolved that, oh, and I should mention too, this is a roll call vote and it has to be a supermajority. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the attached resolution authorizing the purchase of a school bus and equipment for utility vehicles for the Haldane Central School District at Phillips Town, Duchess, and Putnam Counties, New York, at an aggregate mass, maximum estimated cost of $75,000 and authorizing the issuance $75,000 serial bonds of said school district to pay the costs thereof.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Now it's roll call.
Okay. President Hammond?
Yes.
Vice President Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Trustee Hedlund?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the second bond resolution is for the District Facilities Improvement Program. The recommended action states, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of $1.6 million in bonds and the expenditure of $700,000 capital reserve fund monies of Haldane Central School District at Phillips Town, Duchess, and Putnam Counties, New York, to pay the cost of the construction of improvements to and reconstruction of school district buildings and facilities in and for said school district.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and President Hammond?
Yes.
Vice President Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Trustee Hedlund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just a quick question? Is the reason that Duchess is included in there is because we have that little stub end that sticks up into Duchess?
Coral Lane.
Got it. Crazy.
That's our official name.
What?
That's our official name.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
Okay, the next two items are organizing of some dates, which I will not be part of, so.
Happily not.
The first is the July reorg meeting and the second is the August Board of Ed Retreat Date. I assume you would also want to start to consider location for this.
So the July, Julia, will you remind us, the July reorg meeting needs to be done by?
I think I put the information in the...
Oh, in the...
In the executive content. For, it has to be done...
The first Tuesday in July.
It should be the first Tuesday in July, but if you choose, you can do it the day after if the first Tuesday happens to be a holiday or by resolution, we could do it another day.
It has to be done during the first 15 days of July.
First 15 days, right.
So I was, I was going to suggest we skip that first week of July because it's July 4th week. I'm out of town, I imagine.
I'm out of town the second week. That's the only challenge.
And Peggy and Sean.
And Peggy and Sean. Will also have to weigh in. And Dr. Banante?
Needs to be done by the 15th?
Yeah.
Has to be done by the 15th.
So you're on vacation first through sixth. Alright, and I'm on vacation sixth through 13th. Boom.
I could do Friday the 5th. I'm back, I'm back by Friday the 5th.
I'm free both weeks, so I'm the easy one on this one.
I'm fine.
So is, is this something...
So should we say tentative and then we'll check space with Sean and Peggy?
I think that's a good idea.
So Friday the 5th?
And it has to be in July.
Has to be within the first 15 days of July.
Of July, so you couldn't be, couldn't be end of June.
No. Sean needs to be sworn in.
Right.
There we go. Yep, makes sense.
Could we do the 15th? Is that, does that count as the 15th? Because that's the one day after both of you are back, right? Monday is the 15th.
How about we throw both out there?
Right, so we'll throw out the 5th and the 15th? Jen?
Yeah, I prefer the 5th, but I could make the 15th right there.
Alright, so we'll throw out the two.
Okay.
And then Julia, if I'm correct in my understanding, at our next meeting, we have to have a resolution establishing the date since it does not fall on either July 2nd or July 3rd.
Right, and July 3rd wouldn't really be an option because it's not a holiday on July 3rd.
Got it.
Okay.
And then the, do you want to set the August, the August Business Meeting? And usually we wait till after the 15th?
Or is that the retreat?
Well, we'd have to do both. And sometimes we do them at the same time and sometimes we do them as separate things.
We've started here.
Start here and then go.
We've started here and then gone to...
Anytime after the 15th. You guys hear that week of August 19th?
The week of the 19th, we have our administrative retreat on the 19th and 20th.
And that's why I need to take John back to school, so.
Yeah. It can be a tough week for college. Now, having a business meeting later in the month is good for us, just with last minute hires potentially and whatnot, so perhaps the 26th or 27th for the business agenda?
Twenty, we did it in the 20s last year.
We did. I'm gone that last week of August, 26th. Can we do it later in the week of the 19th?
Yeah, the 21st, 22nd works.
22nd. Is it good to have the Board Retreat post Administrator's Retreat?
Trying to recall how we did it last summer. I can't remember and I'm confusing my Board of Education's, I'm sorry, whether we do it before or after.
I don't remember if there's a preference.
I believe we did it before as well and I used that somewhat as the basis of discussing district goals.
Correct.
And then we use that as a springboard for my conversations with the administration the following week.
Although it can work.
So we could do it like Thursday, August 15th?
The retreat.
Yeah, business meeting and...
That is fine for me.
Retreat if you'd prefer to do it before the Administrator.
The only potential issue of the business meeting being on the 15th is if for some reason we are delayed in hiring for the start of the school year on a particular position, whatever that may be. But if such is the case, perhaps we can, we can talk about the schedule for the remainder of the year and have one early in September. Or we can have a call a meeting of the Board to, for hiring less than employees, which we would only need a quorum.
Is it okay to do it on the 15th then or do you prefer like the 16th?
I might not be able to do the 15th. I might not.
Would the 16th be better than the 15th anyway? Do you care, Ann?
I don't care. You don't care.
Could you do the 16th?
Isn't that a...
Friday?
It's a Friday.
No, that's the weekend that I'm going to take John back to school. So it's very likely that I'm out of commission. I'm not firm on that date yet. I did ask him right before I left.
So would the 22nd then be a better?
22nd would be better, yes.
Sounds like it would be better anyway, so later the...
You hear John?
I think so. Pretty sure.
So why don't we leave that as the, the August Business Meeting Retreat and then we'll swing it by Peggy and Sean and make sure they can be there?
Sounds good. Any other?
I think that's...
Yeah, you're good. Okay, moving on to communication from the public. Is there any communication at this point in the public? Nope?
Gosh, record time.
I know. This was a quick one. At the conclusion of this regular session, the Board of Education will convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. No action is planned to be taken during this executive session.